We'll call the meeting to order. We'll have a roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Looneyer.
Here.
Hare.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here. I'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public hearings tonight. And I don't believe there's any presentations or special reports. So we'd like to move right to the trailer court ordinance. What we're going to do is ask the council to read it, the ordinance. It's revised since the last meeting. Then from there, we're going to go to the police chief, the enforcement of it, to the zoning officer, and back to Mr. Lautermilke, Director of Public Works. So the citizens here and watching TV understand what the concerns have been and what the changes are. And then I would ask, when the trustees, we come into the trustee section, discuss it, that if we could have the motion to discuss with the caveat that we will be voting on it in the next meeting. We'll carry it over. So that the public understands we're going to be studying the document tonight, making any changes, and getting a clean copy at the next meeting. And then we can revise it again, but it's a process. So in that, I'd like to start with the council concerning the trailer ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the opportunity to conduct a reading of the ordinance in advance in the public comment session so that any members of the public who desire to comment have a good understanding of what the most recent draft is before they comment. An updated trailer parking ordinance was included in Board packets. The revised ordinance was prepared after consultation between council for the village and your department heads. The intent of the revised ordinance is to reasonably address the public safety concern which has arisen within the village. I've been asked to give a reading of this ordinance. The relevant portion of the ordinance provides that the Morton Municipal Code would be amended by inserting a new section 9-6-20, which shall be as follows. 9-6-20, Parking of trucks, semi-trailers, trailers, pole trailers, and recreational vehicles. It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park any truck, tractor, tow truck, semi-trailer, trailer, pole trailer, mobile home, or recreational vehicle, whether licensed or not and whether connected to a vehicle or not, on any public street or highway within the Village of Morton between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m., except as otherwise permitted in this section. Paragraph B, it shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park any truck, tractor, road tractor, tow truck, or semi-trailer on any lot zoned in a residential zoning district in the Village of Morton. C, it shall be unlawful for any person to park an occupied, an unoccupied, excuse me, camper, camping bus, motor home, camping trailer, boat, boat trailer, house trailer, or similar vehicle on a lot zoned in a residential zoning district in the Village of Morton in a manner in which such trailer or vehicle projects beyond the front of the residence or garage, except as otherwise permitted in this section. Paragraph D, it shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park or allow more than one unoccupied camper, camping bus, motor home, camping trailer, boat, boat trailer, house trailer, or similar vehicle in the side yard or rear yard in a lot zoned in a residential zoning district in the Village of Morton. A camper, camping bus, motor home, camping trailer, boat, boat trailer, house trailer, or other similar vehicle shall not be considered to be in the side yard or rear yard if it projects beyond the front of the residence or beyond the front of the garage. Paragraph E, no vehicle shall be used for living or sleeping purposes while parked in the village unless it is located in a mobile home park. F, it shall be lawful for a person, firm, or corporation to park an unoccupied camper, camping bus, motor home, camping trailer, boat, boat trailer, house trailer, or house trailer in compliance with the following standards. One, on any public street or highway on which parking is permitted on both sides of the street for a period not longer than is necessary for the reasonably expeditious loading or unloading of such vehicles, and in no event for a period to exceed 72 consecutive hours, so long as a traffic safety cone not shorter than 18 inches in height containing retro reflective markings is placed behind and in front of the trailer or vehicle to alert motorists to the presence of the parked trailer. Two, on a lot in a residential zoning district projecting beyond the front of the residence or garage for no longer a period than is necessary for the reasonably expeditious loading or unloading of such trailer or vehicle, and in no event for a period to exceed 72 consecutive hours, so long as a parked vehicle or trailer does not obstruct any sidewalk as the same is prohibited in section 9-6-1A1B. Paragraph G, it shall be lawful for a person, firm, or corporation to park a trailer on a lot zoned in a residential zoning district projecting beyond the front of the residence or garage in conjunction with the performance of a service or delivery for the benefit of the lot or its owners or occupants, and in no event for a period to exceed 72 consecutive hours, so long as the parked trailer does not obstruct any sidewalk as the same is prohibited in section 9-6-1A1B. So that is the end of the new section, which the most recent draft ordinance would introduce into your code. In addition to that formal reading, I also wanted to provide an explanation of the ordinance to the trustees and the public. The revised ordinance is substantially consistent with regulations contained in other neighboring communities like Washington and Pekin. The ordinance continues to allow trailers to be parked on village streets during daylight hours. The ordinance, though, prohibits parking of trailers on city streets between 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m., and it prohibits parking a trailer on a driveway in a residential lot unless an exception applies. There is an exception for camping trailers and boating trailers. Those types of trailers would now be permitted in your driveway or on the street for up to 72 hours for loading or unloading. If the camping trailer or boat trailer is to be parked on the street, cones must be placed at the front and rear of the trailer. And the trailer is only to be parked on the street where parking is permitted on both sides of the street. There is also an exception for construction trailers. A construction trailer is permitted on a driveway only for up to 72 hours when construction work is being performed for the homeowner. This provision would expand the circumstances under which a construction trailer may be parked on a residential lot. Our current zoning ordinance now permits a trailer to be parked on a residential lot for storage purposes when a house is being built. This new regulation would expand that to allow trailers on the driveway after the home is built when construction services are being performed for the homeowner. Any other parking of trailers beyond those circumstances in which an exception permits it on a driveway or on a street in the Village of Morton during overnight hours would be prohibited. At trustee Belsley's request, a second draft trailer parking ordinance has recently been circulated. It was not included in the board packets. Trustee Belsley's requested revisions would allow construction trailers to park on either the street or the driveway for up to 14 days when performing a service for the homeowner. Street parking under trustee Belsley's draft for construction trailers would be subject to the same restrictions as street parking of camping trailers, meaning cones would be required and a trailer could only be parked on a street which allows parking on both sides. In summary, the ordinance which was brought forth is a follow-up to the board's last meeting and contained in the board packet tonight. And trustee Belsley's revised version of that ordinance is intended to remedy the public safety hazard which has been raised by our department heads. The goal of this ordinance is to get trailers off of village streets at night in an effort to secure the safety of our streets for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we would ask the chief, please, to make his comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I actually get into the enforcement of it, I just want to jump on attorney McGrath's comments regarding the ordinance and the public safety aspect of that and sort of give you a foundation. I was unable to attend the last meeting, so I wasn't able to get that information to you. This developed or started developing a year ago when Mr. Lautermilke and I discussed problems that we were seeing with construction trailers blocking the streets for a substantial period of time, landscape, other building materials placed in the roadway, as well as the trailers themselves. We started discussing what we could do to regulate this with ordinances that we had or visiting potential new ordinances. We discussed this also with zoning director Spangler. We brought him in, and as we progressed, we contacted attorney McGrath and shared with him our thoughts. As I and my officers patrol the streets, as well as Mr. Lautermilke being out and about in the streets, our two primary concerns are construction trailers and those unattached trailers. That's what we've seen as the largest problem area. The ordinances which we had, we had none which covered any trailers except for semi-trailers and pole trailers. That was covered in 969. So we looked and we knew that we had to develop something else which regulated trailer parking. Our 24-hour parking ordinances only covers vehicles and the trailers aren't classified as vehicles themselves. So we looked at what we could do and for the safety of the public, we helped draft the ordinance that you are looking at now. Our officers enforcement of this, I try to educate initially. We're looking at a new ordinance, so we will educate people. When we have complaints on noise, we have complaints on barking dogs, we have complaints on 24-hour parking violations. If our third shift officers do that, then we pass that on to our day shift and second shift officers. Try and make contact with the homeowners and give them copies of the ordinance so that we can establish that they are familiar with it. And we try to warn first, and that by education. Once we do that, we make an electronic call of the conversation, and it's so noted that we can pull it up at that address any time that another officer would be there so we can see that they've previously been notified of the violation. After that, which time, we would look to give some kind of a citation. I'm not looking at a warning period that this is going to be three months, six months, a year. We'll just have to look at it as it goes and see where the violations come from. But again, we try to educate first. We saw this with our agency when the traffic laws changed with the no hand cellphone usage. We tried to make a lot of stops and a lot of warning tickets before we started actually writing the citations. And we continue to do that with all the laws that we try to enforce. So that's sort of our thought process on where we will go forward with this. But the large portion of this is we need the public's assistance. Most of this will be generated through citizen complaints and complaint-driven as opposed to self-initiated. It's hard to tell for us if the vehicle's 24-hours violation or 72-hour violation, and my officers have a lot to do other than just merely driving around looking for parking violations. There are more important things for them to do. But this is a concern, a safety concern for the general public with these trailers on the street, and we need something to be able to regulate it. So going forward with that, we are looking through education, assistance through the public, and anytime the public calls a complaint, they are able to do so anonymously. And even if they give their name or number, we don't divulge that information to any person that we speak with. In addition to that, obviously, if it's not coned and it's in the violation of the 11 to 5, our officers will take self-initiative activity on that. Again, notifying the first or second shifts since the 11 to 5 comes during the third shift hours. I'm not sending any of my officers at 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning to knock on somebody's door because their vehicle's parked out front there. So we'll make contact with them, notify them, apprise them of what the violation is, and go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning officer Spangler.
I'm going to start with a few comments on what's in effect right now. Some of this will be a repeat of what you might have already heard, but I want to make sure that everybody is clear on what's currently allowed. The first thing is, on-street parking, whether it be a motor home, a boat, camper, trailer, what have you, that vehicle is supposed to be moved 150 feet every 24 hours. And as the chief alluded to earlier, it's hard to enforce that 24 hours because when did it actually get there? But currently, that's what's in place right now. On private property, a boat, a motor home, a trailer of whatever size can be parked on the property if it doesn't project beyond the front of the house or garage. And that's been, I don't know, I think in the '70s sometime is when that, maybe '79 or so was when that ordinance was enacted. So that's currently what it is, which is pretty restrictive, which means if you have the, if you're the person with the boat, the recreational-type person, boat or camper, it's not allowed there any time. So whenever it's there, it's in violation. Well, that's, I can see it from the citizen's standpoint, that's not very realistic because if you have a motor home or if you have a boat, there are certain things you have to do to get it ready to go for the weekend or the week or whatever, and probably reverse that procedure when you get back. So I think that what's been proposed here is going to be a big benefit to those people. The other area, the village, as chief alluded to, we aren't trying to make it hard on anybody, whether you're the contractor or the recreational person. It was just a concern for the safety of everybody, whether it be the person driving the car, somebody riding the bike, whatever, that they aren't running into something because some of these things, even though you think, well, how do you run into a trailer? But I think there's several of us here that have seen some things happen, and it is a problem. And so we don't want that to be anybody else's problem. And if we know it's a problem, we feel it's our responsibility to address that with you and the village residents. I think, as I said earlier, that I think our ordinance was written in 1979. Well, a lot of things are different than they were in 1979. When you think back to that time period, there weren't near the number of boats or trailer or campers, and for sure, these trailers, there just virtually weren't any. And now they are prevalent, and they're everywhere, which kind of helps to fuel the problem that we have, and which is why we're discussing it here today. So I think going forward, however our ordinance ends up, what the final rendition might be, I think it's going to be a benefit to, like I say, the recreational people. And again, we're not trying to hammer on the contractor because right now, currently, if you are a contractor building a new house, you can pull your trailer up and park it in that lot where the house is being built for eight months or a year, whatever the length of time is that permits going for, that trailer can be there. It doesn't need to be in the street. It's permitted to be there now. Whether it be a big commercial job when that's a job trailer for the, you know, job superintendent to have his office in, that's a permitted use right now. So we're simply trying to clean up some areas that we saw deficiencies and make it better in the end.
But you can park on the city street in front of that new construction during the day?
During the day. That trailer can, that truck, whether it's attached to the trailer or this to the trailer, can sit there during that workday, but then when you leave, it needs to leave with you.
Okay. Mr. Lautermilke, Director of Public Works.
Yeah, I would just like to add, obviously, I was in contact, as Craig said, with him not even a year ago. I think we've discussed this since my time here at the village, as far as my concern. And I'll be honest, I originally thought the 24-hour rule applied to everything, and I think anyone I asked thought the same thing. So, you know, at that point, why aren't these trailers gone after 24 hours? But to get to really my point, our streets, our minor residential streets, which are the concern, is 34-foot face-to-face. These streets, these right-of-way sidewalks are shared by not only pedestrians, a majority of those children, bicyclists, motorists. That's where the concern comes from. We do allow parking on a lot of our minor residencials on both sides of the street. If you took off what I would consider eight foot to be the general rule for cars, our typical vehicles, that would leave us 18 foot left. I measured a trailer coming in tonight, just to be fresh as I come in here, an enclosed, normal box trailer, nine foot edge-to-edge. It won't even fit on the park, the striped parking on Detroit. It would sit a foot outside that. Not that a trailer's going to be parked on, you know, exactly on both sides, but remember on curves too. You can park on curves. If you park these trucks on both sides, there is a very limited space to get through. So sight distance is a concern. It's a public safety issue regardless of what we come up with here. I felt we were a little bit behind looking at Washington's ordinance, which is very strict. Pekin's, I think ours is similar to what they came up with. I don't think this is anything new, you know, to the surrounding communities. Frankly, I'd say we're a little bit behind on that. But I think just being here tonight to have the discussion, trustee Belsley and I had this discussion, whatever comes of it, I'm glad it's being discussed, and I'm glad we're addressing it because to me, it's a public safety issue. Our streets are not designed to have parking on both sides and two-way traffic. And if we continually put these, you know, trailers on the streets, it's an issue. It's a public safety issue, period.
All right, thank you. And one of the reasons to have the staff discuss it, so all the trustees understand what the rules were before, after, what the concerns are of the staff, and we wanted that available to those in the public that's watching tonight and any public in attendance. We've tried to address all the issues. So with that, then we'd ask for any public comments, and then trustees will come back to this in our normal time and discuss it. So is there anybody in the public, if you'd give us your name and address, please?
Sorry, I know, I'm the biggest disruption.
That's fine.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Randy McNeil. I live at 424 South Missouri Avenue here in Morton. I just got, I guess, a question for clarification. Mr. McGrath read the ordinance here, and in section A, you identify tow truck, semi-truck, trailer, pole trailer, mobile home, and so on and so forth. Unlawful in that section. The next section that you go into is section F. You identify camping, camping bus, motor home, camping trailer, boat, boat trailer, house trailer, but you don't put the word "trailer," okay? I'm a homeowner, not a businessman. I've got a 10-foot by 5-foot trailer that I use to move my lawnmower to go over and mow my daughter's yard. The other day, it broke down. Flickinger's was closed. I loaded it up on my trailer. I had company. I left my trailer parked out in front of the street overnight. According to what I read here, I could be ticketed in violation of this ordinance. Is that correct?
Is that correct?
Okay. I can't park that trailer at this point in time with this. I won't be able to park the trailer and the truck in my driveway overnight. Is that correct? What do I do? What do I do? If you're going to make an exceptions for trailers for 72 hours, I think all the trailers need to be accepted for 72 hours. Or homeowner like myself, give us a 24-hour rule. 24 hours, they wouldn't have a problem with. That's a problem I run into, that I run into. I don't know about the businessmen and women here, but as a homeowner here, that's what I run into. I think something should be done for that. I mean, I got to park it somewhere. It's not like I leave it there every day. You know, 95% of the time, it's parked away. You can't see it, it's behind on private property. But there are occasions, I got to park it somewhere. Your rule doesn't allow for that at all.
Okay. And public comments are for your concerns to address the board, and then when the trustees speak among themselves, that all be addressed. So anybody that's going to speak, we need to know what your concerns are. We may not address it, but if you give us our concerns, our ideas, we'll incorporate that through the discussion.
So then, my last thing, the intent was then to leave out trailers like that from this rule. They would, from 11:00 p.m. till 5:00 a.m., they would not be allowed to be parked on the street, or you couldn't have them in your driveway either. Correct? That's the intent?
I would say that it has.
And they're not presently allowed in driveways, so that isn't a change in rule. But yes, the omission of the word "trailer" in that paragraph was intentional.
Okay. It might not be allowable now, but that's something you guys have got to take into consideration. You were the ones that were just saying that this isn't 1979, this is 2017. There's a lot of us out there that have got trailers. There's, I just drove through my neighborhood, there's nine trailers in my neighborhood. I mean, residential people that own them. Small ones, long ones, bigger than mine, shorter than mine. Some of them got them tucked up behind trees and things like that. We got to have an option somewhere. City want to give us a city parking lot to put them in? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else we'd like to speak on the trailer issue?
Name Tom Evans. I live on 209 South 7th. I have a Jeep that I off-road, that I use the trailer to haul it around. Very, not a lot, but there are times that I'll load the Jeep up ahead of time and leave it in front of my yard so I can leave early in the morning. And a lot of times, if I get home late at night, it's too late to get rid of it, so it'll sit there overnight. So again, I'll be in the parking ordinance too, right? Unless I put a cone up. Could I put cones up for something like that? I'm not going to consider it.
Anyone else?
My name's Scott Sauter. I live on 304 North Nebraska, manage a 360 Electric, and we have several trailers. I also have a utility van, and so there's times, actually, my van parks on the street. Is that a violation to have my van on the street, for clarification?
I don't believe so, Mr. Spangler, no.
So just, as I think through that, my 16-foot trailer's just about as blocks probably enough visual as my van does. So if we allow a van, is that different than a trailer to be parked on the street? Just thinking through that. For myself, there's times I run and gun, so 6:30 at night or 7:00. For myself, there's times I run and gun, so 6:30 at night or 6 o'clock at night coming home, I'm like, oh, do I stop and drop the trailer? I do have a spot to put it at the business at the same time. It's easy for me to just bring it, bring it and just leave it there overnight. The 11 to 5 doesn't really help me, because I'm, that's, that's the time for me that it's gonna be there, it's gonna be there from 8 o'clock to 5:00 in the morning, 5:30 in the morning, then it'll be gone. So, as I think through that, to me, as a contractor, it just adds the extra effort in my day, the extra time on my watch. Nobody's paying for it to go unload it, drop it, and then go home. So, just to consider that, as you guys think through it. Thank you.
That will be addressed in the discussion.
My name's Dean Newell. I live at 844 Sunset Road. I'm a small contractor like Scott. In fact, we work together a lot. My trailer that I use, I haul to job and job every day, is actually smaller than his van, so I don't really understand, and I didn't hear from the chief police what the actual safety issue was. I mean, you started to say there was gonna be a safety issue, and you were gonna explain that, but I didn't really catch that, I'm sorry. So, I really don't, don't get what the cone situation is, 'cause I don't have to have cones when I park my truck there. He didn't have to have cones when he parks his van. And it takes up more space and is actually bigger than my trailer. And not, not just us workers and company owners have trailers, 'cause everybody in town has to haul their leaves outside of town. So, a lot of people have, like you were saying, the small utility trailer that they haul the mower, haul their leaves, and a lot of times, you know, that closes at 5 o'clock at night out there. I can't get home and rake them up and get them out there before it closes, so it has to sit overnight for at least a day, till the next day I can get home and hopefully make it before it closes. As far as the narrow streets thing, and the parking of a trailer only on streets that have parking on both sides, I'm not really sure I understand what the reason for that is, because of the same situations. If, if it's somebody can't back out of the driveway because my trailer's sitting there, if I move my trailer and put my truck there, it's the same issue. My trailer isn't any wider than my truck, so I don't understand why they can't get around that. If my truck's parked there, and that's legal, why can't my trailer be parked there legal? I can understand trailers that are small, you know, maybe some of the yard trailers or something like that, maybe have some kind of reflective something on them, but I have a full-size enclosed trailer. Let's see, did I cover everything? Oh, one other thing is, I do remodeling, and a lot of times, I'll do a whole-house remodel. So, I might be there for three months, four months, something like that. The 72-hour thing in the driveway, being able to park one in the driveway for 72 hours, doesn't, I can't do that. How do I explain this? A lot of times, the homeowners are living in these homes. They can't use their garage then, because I'm blocking their garage. Where if I can park on the street, even if I had to put cones or, I don't know what cones would do, 'cause they're gonna end up disappearing, I can't keep them cones there. So, if I could park on the street, I don't know if you get a variance, if you get some kind of permit for something like that, I'm not sure how you address that. I think that was, I think that was about all of them. I think six, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Howard Lindell. I live at 608 East Adams. I just think that you ought to be able to park your trailer in your driveway at night. You get home from work late and you got a trailer, and I do remodeling construction, and you need a place to park. So, the street, I get the street, what you're saying, I can see where that blocks the driveway. Excuse me?
Good reflexes.
I can see where that blocks driveways and could be an issue. But I think you need a place to at least back in your trailer at night, leave in the morning, and be able to use your driveway for that purpose.
All right.
That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Linda Woolsey. I live at 721 East Monroe Street, and I'm representing several families who couldn't be here tonight, and we have, like, travel trailers that we take a little vacation, or sometimes gone for two or three months, whatever. And I appreciate that you're considering that 72 hours to be able to load it and unload it, clean it, do any minor repairs that we have developed on the trip or whatever, 'cause there's, there's just no way, and it, and there's no way you can move it 150 feet every day, 'cause you gotta hook up and unhook up, and if you've ever owned one, that's, that's a lot of work. But I appreciate that, that 72 hours will only be a big help. And I thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I knew there was gonna be something like you guys. Couple, couple things. One was the, I know we talked about there's, Washington and Pekin have similar ordinances, and I'm not sure what exactly Pekin's ordinance is, but you can drive through Pekin, and there's trailers parked all over in their yards and driveways and stuff like that, where they're not on the street. But on the street over there, you have to have a flashing light. It has to flash night, all night long, whether you're, it's in a car, a trailer, anything if you park it on the street. There was one other thing, crap. Oh, this, as far as the 72-hours thing, one thing, I don't know if there's any way you could do it like for the business week. One thing I do is, is my business, if I'm working on somebody's house and I have my trailer there, no matter whether it's in the driveway or on the street, for the weekend, I move it out of there. Because in the weekend is when they're gonna have company there, they're gonna have people there, there's gonna be people at neighbors' houses having parties, stuff like that. So, the 72 hours is a, I can see where you come up with that number, but I would almost like to see that stretched to five or four days, you know, 'cause I don't bring it back till Monday, so then I would take it out Friday. And I'm not sure the public safety issue from 11 to 5, there's less people on the street between 11 at night and 5 in the morning. So, how is that a safety, not a safety violation from 5 o'clock in the afternoon till 11 o'clock at night, when there's a lot more people riding bicycles, a lot more people doing, maneuvering around, driving around?
My name is Doug Hishke. I live at 99 Diamond Point. I own a business in Springfield. Occasionally, I have to bring a trailer home with me. If I'm going north with it, I usually have one-day jobs. If I'm going to, it doesn't make sense for me to drive to Springfield to pick up my trailer and then go to Streeter. So, I will bring my trailer home at night and park it in front of the house. And it's usually there from 6 o'clock at night till 6:00 in the morning when I leave for work again. I know, I know the proposed ordinance had a clause in there from 11:00 PM to 5:30 AM or something like that. What are my options on that? I mean, I don't have a place to park it in the wintertime, especially winter months when it's dark. Just, I'd like to know what I am supposed to do in that time period.
Thank you. I'm sure we're gonna address most of all these concerns in the discussion. Anyone else? Okay? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda tonight. Consent agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, June 19th, 2017, and the approval of the bills. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blounier?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The only item I have is the reappointment of Grant Barton to the zoning board of appeals for a five-year term. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Herr?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blounier?
Yes.
Village clerk?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Thank you. Village administrator?
I have one item tonight, your honor, and it's not for vote tonight. At the meeting on the 17th, we will be having a public hearing and discussion of the appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, ending April 30th, 2018. I just wanted to bring it up, that that's when this will happen. There is a copy that is available at the village hall for anyone to come and review, and it's also on our website. Be reviewed.
Thank you. Chief of police?
We're in 1706.
Do you have any other comments you wanna make before we?
No, I do not.
Okay. Just to clarify one thing, I'd ask the zoning officer, the zoning for, that stands now, so the trustees understand it and those in attendance, of business trailers parked in front of homes as it stands now. Several of them brought that up.
What, if they're on the, they're not allowed on the driveway, if?
While work's going on, I think.
Well, no, I'm saying, bringing them home at night?
Yeah.
And parking. Well, how's the city, what's the zoning on that now?
Well, it'd be that any trailer can't project beyond the front of the house or garage. That's the way the ordinance is written now.
Okay. All right, so, discussing this ordinance, if we could have a motion in a second, and we'll open it up for discussion.
So moved.
And if we could have it, that we were to vote on it, hold it over till the next meeting, if that would be, would you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a first?
Second.
First and second. We'll open it up for discussion, trustees.
Well, I'll maybe kick things off here. I feel like more of an explanation is owed the public and the board as well with some of the revisions that I'm suggesting. But for starters, want to thank the staff, the department heads. A lot of good thought went into this based on their experiences, and I have no reason to doubt any of that. And I think from where we started at a couple weeks ago at our previous meeting, and where we're at tonight, we've, we're going in the right direction. I think we'd all agree with that, with some of the revisions, and that's based in large part from feedback from the public as well. The suggested revisions that I'm making pertain to paragraph G, and I don't know if that's easier to read, or, it basically took paragraph G, which prohibited contractor parking in the streets, and the only exception was it allowed them for up to 72 hours in the front yard area. And what we did is turn that into two paragraphs, one addressing on-street and the other off-street, with both of them being a time limit of 14 days. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but my, my thinking or my logic behind that is, in the case of new home construction, once you start the excavation, you dig the hole, you've got piles of fill all around that lot many times, you don't have the dirt removed, you've got materials coming to the site, you're bringing your forms in for your foundation walls, you got ready-mix trucks there, and you got the contractor that's trying to run and manage that site, and the only place for him to secure his tools and materials are unfortunately or fortunately off-site. It's right alongside the, the construction site itself. It's in the street, but it's parked on the side. And I think that's been a common practice, whether it's been in compliance or not, but that's been a common practice for quite a while, indefinite periods of time, sometimes a few days, sometimes a couple weeks, sometimes longer. But I, I just felt like with what we had drafted, that didn't get addressed, and I just, I guess, talking to contractors and hearing feedback from others and from contractors, that was gonna pose a real burden on them. And again, I mentioned the example of new home construction, but there's other examples that, that come to mind. One is when you have fire or water damage. You're gonna have restoration companies that we all know, or they camp out there, and they're on that site for, you know, sometimes several weeks, sometimes a couple months, where they're repairing the damage to that home. And it's a necessary part of their business, and it's not always practical for them to be able to park a trailer in the front yard because of the damage to that property, or landscaping, or, or they have a tub for removing the debris, so you have to park that trailer in the street under the circumstances. Another one might be just subcontractors in general. One that came to mind was geothermal, and those are not new construction necessarily, but for existing homes. And geothermal contractor, you know, that could last for a couple days to over a week, depending on the size of the project, and their crews are needing access to the tools and the materials, and it is a burden to contractors to bring that, if they're an out-of-town contractor, to bring that, go back to their job site every night in East Perry or Bloomington or Pekin, and then pick it up and bring it back to that site in Morton. I just, I think, you know, I appreciate, again, the, where the draft of this ordinance is going, and I think there's a lot of good improvements we're making from it that will no doubt improve the safety of our public right-of-ways, and hopefully be less of a hindrance or hassle for the enforcement side of it, for our employees. But I just feel that I don't want to make these improvements or these changes and put an undue burden on, on the contracting community if we can come up with somewhat of a compromise to address some of the situations that I just explained. Again, I threw out there 14 days, I don't know if that's right or wrong, but it's a starting point, and that was my thinking on, on suggesting it.
The last meeting when this was first introduced, I said that I didn't want this to be an undue burden on anybody. So, first, thank you to everybody who took the time to make comments, because there needs to be clarity on both sides. I understand better what your challenges are, and you understand how we've moved forward to change this ordinance to help you not hinder your business. That's the number-one thing. And so, please trust that we're going to continue to look at this and, and take a lot of your suggestions into consideration. So, again, I do appreciate that. Roger, one quick question about the current ordinance. To be clear, a person cannot park a trailer, a utility trailer, in front of their house overnight at this particular point in time. Is that correct, according to the words?
That's the way it is written right now.
Okay. So, there's really no change to that? And there have been some noted improvements, and still a few challenges, so I'm sure that we'll come up with a conclusion that works for everybody. Anybody else?
I just think, real quick, one of the things that, as a business owner and someone who sends out a significant number of crews with trailers, I get it, I understand, but one of the things that I would ask you guys to do is, existing right now, there's a project on the corner of Nebraska and Jefferson. When you're southbound on Nebraska and you're stopped at that stop sign, and you're making a left turn and you look right, you cannot see oncoming traffic. So, from a safety standpoint, one of the challenges I would tell you guys is, it's real, that's, it's not a, it's not something that we're, that we're making up, because that, that's gotta be addressed, and because that is a, that's a legitimate concern right there. And so, if we didn't address this, and, and stuff like that started becoming more and more prevalent, we are gonna have more accidents. To, to kinda talk about, yeah, and at night, vision is impaired, right, for a lot of the population, even during the day, there's more significant travel or traffic. At night, it is different, because your vision is blocked. So, while we do understand every one of your concerns, and they're all legitimate, and there wasn't one of them that I'd be like, oh, I'm not sympathetic to that, I am, but at the same token, we do also have to protect the people that are using the streets and make sure that our, our policies are put in place, that, that people kinda understand that. And then there's also some common sense, right? One of the things I'd ask you guys, I bet not one of you guys have been ticketed, right? So, so, actually, you're not, that's not true. You just heard, there is a law. Yeah.
But is that only because a neighbor hasn't called a complaint? If they would, I'm sure the chief's...
That's, that's part of, that's part of the issue of what we're walking through. So, my point is, there is gonna be some common sense to this as well, okay? So, we have to, we have to trust in that. So, these are things that we're, that we're walking through. So, while your guys' concerns are, are very legitimate and true, we do also have some different, coming from a different angle, and we're gonna try to get there the best we can, and then trust that, that we've got leaders and people that are working for the village that are gonna use common sense and be able to do this, to enforce it appropriately. That's what, so you guys can kinda see and understand that part of it.
And I think part of the problem with the business trailers being there, sometimes they unhitch them, use that vehicle, and then we have unhitched trailers that are not marked, don't have reflectors, and then somebody's gonna drive into them, that's, that's a thing, or we even had a gooseneck trailer parked the wrong way on a village city street. We're talking about residential... We're talking about residential streets parked the wrong way, so any kid on a bike at night or anything, it's not marked, it's not coned, there's no reflectors on that front, could hit their head and land there. And most of these are in neighborhoods where kids are. So there's legitimate complaints, but unhooked trailers help drive this, where contractors, I'm a contractor, where you drive home, you don't need the trailer for the next job, and you leave it there. It's residential, I think Roger would agree, it's not storage lot. So we don't, part of this driving force, after I talked to the staff, is the unhooked trailers that the business doesn't use the next day. So there's different issues amongst all that.
Yeah, we're working there.
Common sense has to rule, but...
But what about us that live in those? It's at our house, my house. You know, like you were saying, like, yes, break a trailer home at night. Well, I live in them residential areas down here, and I have to break my trailer home because I can't leave it on the job site. So I got to park it somewhere.
Roger, it's own residential, not residential business. You don't have a business permit to have a business trailer in front of your house. It's existing law, correct, Roger?
Correct.
So it's not really legal right now to bring a business trailer home and park it in your residence.
It's not legal for a resident to bring their non-business trailer home and leave it parked there either.
Correct, correct. So we're trying to address each one of them. As the lady spoke, we've figured out a way, we thought that was fair to enforcement, to the people with the motor homes. And I can tell you, I've had people call me for one day, two days, and three days. After discussion from everybody and staff, we thought three days was reasonable. So we have to work through the other two issues.
I would like to see some provisions made to allow trailers to be parked in the driveway, in the front of the house, not on the street, but in the driveway for those, to accommodate those people that, you know, have a trailer, they're in transit, you know, from one job to another, passing through home, they want to stop at home rather than going to Peoria to drop the trailer off and coming back. I think from all the emails that I received, that's probably the biggest concern. So I would like to see some provision, but again, I think they should be parked in the driveway in those cases and not on the street.
So I would ask that you're talking about the residential that just have trailers?
Yeah.
With non-business?
Such as this gentleman, such as Doug.
And then you also want to address the business people that have trailers that bring them home?
Well, I think, I'm not going to go there quite yet.
Okay.
But those that, again, you're, you know, you, you were, your business is located in Peoria, you are working in Bloomington, you're coming back through the end of the day, you want to stop at home rather than going over to Peoria to drop it off, and you want to, you don't want to make that trip back and forth for really no reason.
Okay, so...
But again, put it in your driveway.
The business trailer as well? Okay, all right. I'm just trying to...
Oh, yes, it'd be a business trailer. A business trailer as opposed to just a...
Right, I, we have two trailers.
Hobby trailer.
The residential trailer and the business, so you would consider...
Both the hobby trailer and the...
Okay. Nate, Sam?
Yeah, I, I would probably feel the same as Ken as far as, you know, some sort of, and I understand Doug's point where, you know, you're coming from Springfield and you're going to Streeter to have, you know, time, you know, it doesn't make sense to drive back to Springfield and then back up to Streeter, you know, in, in the morning. I understand that. And, and having somewhere to, to store it, you know, on a regular basis, I imagine that doesn't happen. It's not an, you know, every, every other day thing, I imagine, it's a every once in a while thing. And I think some sort of provision to, and I don't know if it even, we even would need to be seventy-two hours, but perhaps something that's, you know, maybe it's a twenty-four-hour thing, and, and kind of as, as part of that, looking at the seventy-two hours, you know, I don't see anything in here that would prevent somebody from, you know, okay, they're there for seventy-two hours, they drive around the block, and they're there for another seventy-two hours, and then they drive around the block, and then they're there for another seventy-two hours. I don't think that's going to happen, but I, I would like to see some...
Well, I think as we write this ordinance, if people abuse it, then we're going to have to deal with it, but we're trying to make it. It's really honor system. You know, the citizens want them off the street, so we expect citizens to honor, get as close to seventy-two hours to as was requested, if we allow it in the residential driveways, maybe we can come up with seventy-two hours or some time limit, or allow them during the weeks of collecting leaves. I'm just trying to think outside the box, those two weeks in the driveway. So I just, we need some comments from the trustees, where you want to go with this, to come up with some revision on addressing the driveway. Is there anything on this? Because it takes a lot of meetings to get to this point, guys, so...
I do have one more, one more comment, kind of as far as, well, scratch that, come back to me.
I'm back to you.
Again, I would just, I think, note, and I believe this would be the case, this is, this will be complaint-driven for the most part, enforcement, I would assume.
Yes. So if someone, if somebody's abusing it...
Yeah, so if someone's abusing it, then, yeah.
And that's, that's really the point of it. We have some in bad locations on curves, we have some people that constantly park it there, we've had those complaints, and it is a safety issue. So those are the things we're trying to get to, but when you do, you have to address it all. And through that, the boats and motorhomes came up that nobody really thought of, the way it was, as Mr. Spangler said, we were so restrictive, we almost forced everything out, out in the street, so maybe we need to be there, but we need to improve that, and we're willing to look at all sides, but I need some more input if we're going to write, try to get something to, to you, council and the staff. Do you have any more concerns? You run a business with trailers, I mean...
No, I, I just, you know, from...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Sam, but...
No, yeah, I, I feel, you know, like I said, I, you know, I, I see, I see both sides of it. I don't want to, I don't want to overreact to some of the people that, you know, the two extremes, right? You know, that's why I want, I want us to be able to kind of come down the middle. Have, I, I would rather see a more restrictive language in the code, and maybe less enforcement and common sense, so that when it does come time from a complaint standpoint that we can enforce something, versus having a, you know, kind of too, too loose of language or too unrestricted, and then when it comes time where we do have real safety issues, you know, how do we actually get that, how do we actually get that trailer then off the street or the concern? So that's kind of my thought process of, of thinking about it, you know? Because again, you just, you know, again, if anybody wants to, a great, a great avenue to go look at right now is, is just head down, head down Nebraska South, stop at the Jefferson.
And some of the older...
Just take a look, and you'll go, I was like, oh, that's what they're talking about. And it was, that was pretty enlightening to me. And then, then you start thinking about a, a full-size trailer, you know, just think of a, you know, not your sixteen-footers, like your twenty-four-footers, you know, parked in the, while they're in the driveway, you know, the neighbors that are trying to pull in and out of there, your, your view is restricted, your actual, your actual distance of clear visibility is, is restricted, you know, just from backing, backing in and out. So those are things for me that I'd rather us to be a little bit more restrictive, and less, you know, and more common sense on the enforcement side, than to be too loose on what we're, on what the language says, because when it does come time to enforce it, or it does come time when something bad happens, because it will, then we're reacting to it then, right? You know, that's, that's the way I, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Ken, did you have something you wanted to add, Ken?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I guess two things. One, I'd just like to make the observation that I believe the small utility trailers are actually more of a safety concern, not so much from the, from the line of sight, but just from coming up on them quickly and not realizing that they're present. In fact, that's happened to me, because they sit low and you, you're not looking for them down there. Well, actually, I think a big box trailer becomes more obvious. So I just want to make that...
I know what you're saying, I've seen some homemade trailers that seem low, and they don't have much reflectors.
No reflectors.
And that's why we thought we have to have the cones with reflectors to protect the citizens.
The other thing is, I'll, I'll take Mr. Newell up on that. I think the ordinance ought to be dusk to dawn, because he's correct, in the winter, you know, it's dark at six o'clock in the evening and...
And I believe, is it Pekins?
Pekins is like that.
Pekins is like that, so...
Sun up, sun down, or sun down.
We've been, we've been looking at that.
Okay.
I would agree with that, and I do. Would there be any sort of, you know, I know there's not now, but some sort of variance or some sort of, okay, very extenuating circumstances, you know, I'm going to pull, you know, an extra trailer, and it's got to stay, I'm moving family, whatever the, the situation may be where you have to have a trailer parked in your street for more than that seventy-two hours, or is there any, it'd be nice to have some form of, of relief that they could go in, and I think it would have to be a very good reason, and I, I hate to come back to the whole permit, you know, kind of thing, but something that, you know, I think that they would need to come in and discuss, you know, and kind of prove their point that, yeah, it's extenuating circumstances, but to have something, some relief in there, so if it doesn't fit in to this ordinance, that there is some way, you know...
Well, if we did that, it appears to me, we'd have to look at the safety, the location and that. And the one gentleman that took the trailer home every weekend is kind of nice, because as he spoke, I thought, well, you could do almost a four-day limit, four evenings, and then that trailer would be gone for the weekend. So I think we need to look at that option to give those citizens that are putting up with that on that block a break from it. I mean, that could be, and I'm just thinking outside the box, but as we do, do you have any comments, because I'm going to ask the staff to make some comments on any of their concerns, so...
Well, just one more, Your Honor. The, the cones themselves, I guess, maybe just further explanation, I guess, on other townships that are in our area, kind of what their process is for that, or I guess their code, so to speak. This, I, I don't know if I've ever seen cones like that up in other towns. I don't know if there's cones, or you said, I guess I heard Sam was talking about flashers. I just want to hear a little more explanation where the cones exactly came from.
I think through the staff and everybody's discussion, because we're worried about exactly what Ken said, the homemade trailers and those low ones, a lot of them don't have the reflectors. I think we would have trouble with citizens with flashing yellow lights down the streets. I would, I would rather have a cone next to my house than a flashing light. That's my opinion, but you guys, I mean, we will vote on it eventually.
Well, I guess, and that's, and maybe it sounds petty, but I guess we've, we've heard it from one of the gentlemen in the audience, talked about just coming out in the morning and the cone's not there. That, that does happen. I work at a dealership and things go missing all the time, including rims, wheels, tires, radios, so, yeah, I'm sure there's people beyond or above taking a cone.
Help us come up with a different type of reflector then, I mean, something.
I think I'd just offer to Nate's comment in regards to some special exception. I'll go back to the example I gave again. Right now, when a home has water or fire damage, I mean, I think we're all very understanding, I know the staff has been, but again, under unique or special circumstances, is there protocol? What do we do there? Right now, we sort of, you know, let it take care of itself? Is that what we want to do going forward, or do we want to make any provision for them? I guess that's, now's the time to do it if we're going to do it.
I would, in my opinion on that, I would rather, I would rather we let our department heads manage that versus trying to legislate that in language because of the number of exceptions. You know, we're going to be inundated with permits or exceptions or that, you know, I would rather, that's what I think the department heads are for, and, and why we should trust them to be able to handle that part of it. In my, that's, that's what I think. I think that's a, that's why we've got these good people in the leadership positions, and if somebody has a situation, I, I would try...
Can I address this? Yeah. We occasionally, from time to time, have citizens contact us regarding certain circumstances, and, and we let each case sort of weigh on its own merits, but we do allow some exemptions for some of the parking. And, you know, we notify our officers of, that, that we have allowed that. I'm not going to go into all the cases, case by case, but, but each one, again, weighs on its own merits and, and without requiring someone to make some kind of a permit request, which would cause, to me, an undue burden on, on a lot of our staff, either at the utility office or, or at the department. I think that merely they can contact us at the police department and, and discuss that with us, and, and we would evaluate.
Not to mention from a timing, our timing standpoint, if you think about this, depending on when the permit was needed, since we only meet twice a month, your timeframe in between those, you know, it's already going to be, it's already going to be done and over with, so that's, that's just my feeling on it, is letting them...
Mr. Spangler, you want to make a comment?
Well, just to address one of trustee Belsley's concerns, the, the current ordinance that we have, where I had mentioned earlier that if you have a new construction site or a construction site period, and it's a permitted construction site, then you can have that. So if, in the case that there was a fire, or there was a water damage or whatever, and there, there are a lot, most of those are permitted, they get plumbing permits, electrical permits, building permits, what, then our, the wording in there is already in place to allow for that trailer to be there.
On the street.
While that, while that project is going on.
Not on the street, though.
On the driveway. But Mr. Belsley, you're talking about the street also.
Yeah, that, that's where I was going, is there, but, but I'm gathering from the feedback and the comments, there's, there's not an appetite for that. But I, I wanted to raise the issue because of the feedback and the comments I've heard from the contracting community, but, you know, we'll leave it where it's at.
All right, so to address the, go ahead.
For you folks that have trailers and, and you're talking about that area that's not been addressed, where you can't park in front of your house, I too have trailers, so, and I have another business, and so I want you to know that I, I feel your pain, and, and I too have to abide by the law, so I'm hoping we can come up with something that is a little easier to live with.
And to understand your pain, I'm just going to give you a short example. I spoke to a really nice young man, I've raised three sons, I figured he was about thirty, he was thirty-two, and he raised the question, because he's a small contractor. He said, well, you talk about the nuisance in the street and all this, went on, and, and I told him, I says, yeah, you have a residential, you're in a residential district, it's not a storage lot, and you don't have a business. And then he told me what kind of business, a trailer. I said, well, you probably could use, you know, park it at night in somebody's lot, the gentleman here, as a place that you could park your lot at night. I said, so you need to find somebody like me that has a lot that, to park a trailer in. And he goes, what do you charge? Well, I don't have any, but I mean, what do they charge? I said, I didn't know, but I says, to understand it, believe it or not, I, I said, well, why don't you just bring your trailer over and park it at my lot? And so I did, and got to meet him, he's going to park it there for a while, and I did it to understand this issue, because I wanted to see how big the trailer was, and it's probably a twelve or fourteen-foot trailer, real nice gentleman, but where he lives in those narrow lots, it takes up quite a space with the double crew cab dock. So I understand your pain, because I seen it firsthand, but we need to find that. So believe me, we've been talking, we've gotten all the emails, I apologize, I didn't get a couple answered, but it's been, we, we're trying hard to get it right, and I figured some of these issues would be coming up, and we're, a lot of us have been talking with the staff. So to address Mr. Hare and Mr. Belsley, different ones, we'll have the staff come up with a consensus, if it's a police chief that is notified or whatever, we'll figure that out for exceptions, if that's, so I think you're asking for us to come back with exceptions. Ken's idea of addressing the trailers on the driveways, we'll come up with something there to see if that has appetite. Is that consensus of the board? And we'll look at both hobby trailers and business trailers, correct, Ken?
Yes.
Is that correct consensus? Okay, so that would address most of these gentlemen, but you're not wanting, is there a consensus to address the business trailer? you're not wanting, is there a consensus to address the business trailers in front of their homes now, or not? We're just doing the driveways?
Business trailers to be.
Like these gentlemen say.
On, on the, on the street.
Right.
I don't, I don't see a problem with, with that, based upon, I mean, if we have a motorhome or travel trailer on the street, I don't see, I don't divide the difference between, you know, a business trailer, size-wise, safety-wise, in between business trailer and a travel trailer.
I'm just asking the question.
I would, though, I think the difference is that recreational trailer, motorhome, whatever, less likely that it's going to show up every week for 72 hours.
Yes.
Correct.
So I don't have a problem with it sitting on the street for three days, you know, if somebody's preparing to, you know, make a trip. But that contractor or whatever that's pulling the trailer home.
Every night.
That's going to happen. A lot of times, honestly, it's going to happen every night, put it in the driveway.
Gentlemen, right now, the recreational motorhome is covered under another section, under 24 hours. It's a vehicle where the other is not, and that's one of the differences. This would actually sort of extend them to be able to allow them from 24 hours to 72.
Very good, because the public has to know, we've tried to increase and do better on this permit than what we've had in areas too. We just haven't addressed all areas of it. It's kind of cumbersome just to do each one, to check it and to improve it. So what I'm asking is, of the trustees, where do you want to counsel, where do the staff to come back with something else?
You're, you've got a little bit more direction, Pat, right? How you feeling?
More than last time.
Gotcha.
The, the only other question I'd have for clarification is, and I'm not wanting to put words in your mouth, I, I get the sense that in general terms, if the driveway, if we're going to permit parking, and if the driveway could accommodate it, your preference is that the parking be in the driveway? And in instances for the RV or boat trailer, where the, it couldn't be conveniently parked driveway without obstructing pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk, for example, then we permit it on the street.
For the 72 hours.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
The recreational vehicle.
Of the recreational vehicles, for the, the hobby trailer and the business trailer, it'd be, my understanding is your, your present interest is driveway only, and with some mechanism that is accommodating, but not to the extent of park it every single night, 365 in the drive.
Correct.
To accommodate more of a gentleman who brings it from Springfield to Morton to Streeter as opposed to, you know, bring it home every night.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anything else trustees would want us to add or revise to the staff and the council can work on this week?
I guess a question, more or less. I'm not sure if it'd be for Roger, or who it'd be for, but I guess we talked a little bit about trustee Belsley and his, what he proposed to adding, and we're seeing how that wasn't needed. I guess I want to make sure it's going to fold it for, if that wasn't needed, because there's ways for me to get certain permits already for, for those things. That was that, just want to clarify, that's only for the driveway, is that correct? It's not for?
Well, we don't have any permit process in place now.
There is not a permit process?
No.
So currently, so.
The permit I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I confused you. The permit I'm referring to is, you have a, a home that's damaged by fire, or whatever the case may be.
Talking about a building permit?
A building permit, or that type of permit. That's the type of permit I refer to.
And that still would only be?
Well, then that then allows the parking in the driveway.
Yeah.
Is what, is what. So by having that, yeah.
So addressing Mr. Belsley's concern of those examples he used, they can do that now, but it's only on the driveway. If we want to allow it on the street.
That's a different.
Under those, then we have to, we have to get consensus that's something we want to address. Is that fair, Randy?
I would think that makes, so. I would think that makes sense to add that, then, personally. And I don't know what the exact time would be, but I do believe that would need to be added.
On those special circumstances.
Especially circumstances.
I'm not trying to put words in my mouth.
No, I, I'm fine either way, but I thought Chief was explaining that we're comfortable with handling those unique circumstances, or the staff is in general, public works, police, zoning.
Correct.
When those situations arise.
That's where I feel, I want to be, while I understand that, I would think I would rather be more restrictive in our language, instead of opening it up, and be, and be, lean on, lean on our, our department heads for the, for the actual enforcement of this. So to be, I personally would rather see it more at the 72, and let them, let them make those decisions.
Is that 72 in the driveway?
Well, no, 72 on the street, when you've got those issues with the trailers, and then you're already, for those examples that we brought up for the hardship, that's really already covered, because they're going to be in the driveway, and that should allow them. I haven't heard any complaints about that, where you've had extended restoration services and stuff that are in there, you know, when they're in the driveway, that's already covered under that language.
So Roger, I think while we're saying those special circumstances, where you give the permit out, we'd have it in here where they could not only park on the driveway throughout it, but 72 hours on the street. If they need 72 more hours on the street, then they got to talk to the police chief.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Is that consensus?
But, but we would not put that in there.
No, right, correct.
That's what I'm trying to say, is you don't want that, yeah, you don't want that.
Right. We don't want it in there. It'll be up to the staff to do that. So the trustees aren't in the position, or the mayor, we're doing special favors for special people, they're going to have to justify that to the staff.
Let the department have.
With the safety concern of that location. Is that fair consensus?
Yes.
Okay. You got that?
I think so.
Okay. What other issue did you have there, Randy? In yours, is there any other issue?
No.
Is that it?
That was it. They've been addressed.
Okay. Any others? All right, move on. Just trying to get them all. You go to the lawyer meeting. Okay. Corporate counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Good answer. Director of Public Emergency Services there.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Good answer again. Director of Public Works?
He, he has nothing tonight. I was the chance.
All right, planning and zoning officer.
A couple items tonight. The first one on your agenda was a case with Tazewell County for a special use for a single-family home building site on Cooper Road, and it's just west of Foster Road, if you can picture where that is. I don't see that that's going to have any kind of an effect on, on anything that we're going to ever do. So I will be glad to respond to them with whatever comments you would like me to make.
So is the board fine with that, Randy? Can you respond, Roger can respond to that? Okay. All right, next one.
Okay, the next item is the special use request, 17-08SP, and that is a special use request for a three-story motel at the very south end of Walton, off that cul-de-sac. That public hearing was held June 26 at the planning commission, and they had a favorable recommendation, unanimous favorable recommendation, to approve that special use. I've included in your packet the site plan, as well as the building elevation drawings. It's going to be very comparable to what's currently in that area and what we've already approved with the Holiday Inn Express.
Do we have a motion?
Some of. One second.
Any discussion?
Just before the vote, really quick, I need to disclose that I am a minority partner in the Luxme Properties, and so I'll be abstaining from the vote on for this approval.
If there's no discussion, call the vote.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Hare is abstaining. Lehman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And the last item is in regards to the interstate corridor, and it's actually a change to our ordinance, which you each have a copy of that ordinance. It's 17-09. And I'm going to point to that poster up there next to Mr. Parrott. The line that you see there in red is the proposed interstate corridor. What you see in that shaded gray area is the corridor as it currently exists, and the shaded area is just simply the 500 feet either side of the interstate right-of-way. The red line takes in, if, like, for example, up there, south of the interstate, at the change, is Caterpillar, it takes in their whole property. It just shows that that whole property is in the interstate corridor. We thought that might be a cleaner way to do it, rather than deciding, is this partially in or not? And if you don't mind, I can read you that ordinance that we are proposing real quick here. Interstate corridor, each and every parcel of land located within the corporate limits of the village of Morton, which is bounded on any side in any manner by any interstate right-of-way, or 50% or more of that, the area of such parcel is located within 500 feet of any interstate right-of-way. So if your property abuts that interstate, you're automatically going to be in the interstate corridor, whether you've got three acres or 75 acres. That's a little bit of a change from what we had before, because before you could have just a part of your property that was in the interstate corridor. That won't be that way now. You're either all in or none in, so. We tried to make copies of that, but by the time you get it down to something that we could hand you, it's so small that you can't see it.
Thought it would be a map on our website.
Yes, there will be, it's on our, it will be on our website.
So you're asking for approval of the new.
Of that new definition and that map, yes.
I'll move to approve. Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the hall.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Trustee Belsley?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Trustee Blunier?
Nothing more this evening.
Trustee Lehman?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Trustee Hare?
Just one thing, again, great job out of the fireworks. I think I saw quite a few people. Everything went, went good. It seemed like a really good attendance. I think it is every year, and they, they did a great job out there. So appreciate everybody, all the work they did from the village, the appointments, and the veterans that did that, so.
And I think the police had to get about 1,000 cars out of there, so.
Yeah, it was, that was, it felt like there was more than normal, I'm not sure, but.
It took about an hour and a half to clear it out.
Yeah, it was, I know there's a lot, a lot of work, but.
I only know that because I was sitting there going over trailer ordinance.
Nothing else tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Trustee Newman?
It took you that long, huh?
Yeah.
Nothing else.
Trustee Parrott?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. We have a closed section for the purpose of discussing, collecting, and negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives per five, ILCS 122C2. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll caller.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.